Welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Wednesday, July 5th, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Uh, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We actually do not have a pastor this evening, so the public's listening tonight. Um, if you want to get on that pastor list, just get a hold of our city clerk and she'll get you on there. But, uh, anyway, Lord be with us. Item three, call to order. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you say roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of the agenda consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports five A approval of approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will, uh, ask that the claims be removed because I have a conflict with one of the items on claims. And I would also mention, since it'll be on consent then, that the, uh, tree board minutes are in there. And I would point out to my colleagues that the municipal review that just came out has a very nice article on keeping track of trees. And I would mention that the tree board has already started tracking trees back in two thousand five. We have done the inventory and our tree board mentions it in the minutes, which is on the agenda. And they have been keeping records and track of conditions of the trees, working on the Emerald Ashport through that listing of the inventory. So it's a very good program. And once again, in that area, Bellevue's ahead of the curve.
And thank you to the tree board.
Councilman Preister?
We don't have the tree board minutes on this agenda.
Must have been last.
I think it was last time.
Last week. Okay, last meeting.
We still thank them. They do a lot of work. So item six is put onto the regular agenda. Any other questions? Please vote.
Well, maybe.
Did we need a second on that for his motion to remove the?
Got it. Oh, no, not to, not to remove.
I may have to do this. It's locked up on me here. Okay, Councilman Casey.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
Councilman Burns.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And, uh, number six, approval of claims. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the claims.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining for a ri- reason of a conflict.
Please vote.
Our computers are abstaining too.
Okay, what was the motion, Mayor, and the second?
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw to approve the claims.
And we got that one. Was there a motion to pull that or?
Uh, we just pulled, we just pulled.
We just pulled them. Okay. Cancel. We shouldn't need that. Okay, we're gonna try this. And the motion. I'll just do a roll call vote. Casey.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
McCaw.
Yes.
Preister is abstaining. Burns.
Yes.
And Welch.
Yes.
Vote is five to zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have none this evening. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any request. Item ten, liquor licenses, ten A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application for Ronald S. Seibel as the new manager for VFW one zero seven two seven at ninety-five oh one South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. And I will open up ten A for public hearing. Is the applicant here by chance? Okay, anybody wanting to speak regarding the liquor license, um, on ten A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application of Ronald S. Seibel as the new manager for VFW uh, one zero seven two seven. At ninety-five zero one South Twenty-Fifth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one four seven.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm gonna take a roll call vote again. Casey.
Yes.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
McCaw.
Yes.
Preister.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four one two four, request to rezone lots one and two. Child's estate acres replat seven, being a replat of lot eight, replat child's estate acres. And lot twenty-three, child's estate acres from RG fifty and RS eighty-four to RG fifty and RS eighty-four. For the purpose of a lot line adjustment, applicant Bonafacio Asensio and Eric Kano. Uh, general location, one zero one, one zero, or sorry, one zero zero one, one zero zero three Virginia Street. Um, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one two four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article three of ordinance number forty-one oh four. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about one zero zero one and one zero zero three Virginia Street. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number four one two four.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven A one, request to small subdivision platelots one and two, child's estate acres replat seven. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item eleven A one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A, ordinance number four one two five, compensation ordinance is updated. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one two five, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. Classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees. Providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four one one seven. And providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And I'll open up the public hearing for twelve A. Is there anyone here to speak regarding ordinance number four one two five? If so, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four one two six. Request to rezone lots one and two, vacanti replat, being a replat of lot two, otos replat from BG to BG and RS seventy-two. For the purpose of commercial and single-family residential development, applicant Puglisi House LLC. General location, South Thirty-first Street and Golden Boulevard. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one two six, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about South Thirty-first Street and Golden Boulevard. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation at one two five one zero South Ninth Street, Bellevue, six eight one two three. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. And Mike will come forward and present.
Good evening, everyone. I have a short clip I'd like to show you on the one twenty-five ten South Ninth Street property. The property sits well off the frontage road and it's pretty much hidden six months out of the year. Um, it's been vacant for approximately thirteen years. Early on when it was vacant, it was, um, fairly kept secured. And like I said, it was off the, uh, the main thoroughfare, so there were no complaints on the property at all. Since then, it's, uh, continued to deteriorate as you can s- well, are seeing the pictures, uh, the paint's falling off, there's holes in the roof, the windows have all been broken out, there's graffiti painted uh, within the property, uh, inside and out. Um, the roof is, uh, deteriorated to a point where that's the interior, the, the ceiling, the plaster lath has fallen in. Here more recently, when we went out to take these clips for council tonight, it looks like, uh, there may be a squatter in here. There's a path there that's beaten down, as you can see, as we approached the, uh, side door. Even put a little, uh, shingle down for a doormat. And may have invested in a new lock on the door because it was wide open, uh, back in the spring. There's trash can there with some tomato juice and sardines outside the door. Do you have any questions?
I think the pictures tell me a lot on that one. Any questions for Mike? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mike, didn't you state in our report that they had initially contacted your department about demolition and have done nothing since then? Do I understand that correctly?
They did contact me and, you know, um, as near as I can tell, they've contacted several, uh, demolition contractors, but I did receive a call from them to, again, today. They said that they hadn't got any response from the demo contractors. And that they probably wouldn't show up, but they just let it go through for tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike? Public hearings open. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak regarding thirteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Um, second reading and public hearing will be
No.
Hold on, fourteen? Yeah, sorry. Um, so the public hearing on fourteen A. Nobody wants to speak regarding that, right? Please come forward if you do. Okay, close fourteen A. And, um, go to fourteen A one, resolution number two zero two three dash one eight condemning the structures located at one two five one zero South Ninth Street. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two three dash one eight.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? All right, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnations at two six one one Margot Street, Bellevue, six eight one four seven. And I will open fourteen B up for public hearing and we'll let Mike present first.
Okay, once again, I have a clip I'd like to show for this. So initially back in twenty seventeen, some notices were sent out to the owner. The, they were not accepted, they were returned. So the ordinance states that we posted on the door. It was posted on the door at that time. The property was in a lot better condition in, in twenty seventeen. Um, since that time, it's discontinued to deteriorate. That's right inside the, the door over the entrance. That's the, uh, ceiling above, right inside the front door there. All the soffits have deteriorated to the point where they're rotting and falling off. Um, there's been reports of folks going in and out of the house in the, at night. Um, like I said, all the soffits have pretty much given way all the way around the house. Um, the garage door is wide open. The front windows are, are wide open and the front door is not secured either.
Any questions for Mike? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mike, I wanted to make sure that in our report, it said that there was another notice um, was sent and in May and that was recently accepted. So
That was signed for.
Okay, so that means that they know that this is coming and, um, they're aware of it versus not being aware of it.
Okay, looks like we got someone's gonna speak.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Marlene Glass is the owner. I think she's here.
Okay, and there, from what I understand, there's been no attempt to contact the permits de- department as of right now?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Now, public hearings open for fourteen B. If you'd like to come forward and just state your name and address for the record and sign in, please.
Okay. Marlene Glass, nickel. Uh, the property's still in. Okay, where's the ink pen? There we go. I know the property is in bad condition. My husband has Alzheimer's and I live in Liberty, Liberty, Nebraska. And, uh, it's kind of hard running back and forth trying to take care of this and I've got the other property that's gotta be taken care of and what, he does nothing. I mean, he'll, he'll sit and, uh, but as far as helping me, there is nobody to help me. Uh, it's all me, so ah, there is two people that want to buy it. The only problem is the first guy that wanted to buy it, the house got broken into, they just trashed the whole place. And I had a pretty good idea who it was because he wanted me to sell it to him. And when he called and, uh, he told my daughter that, uh, her mother passed away. And that she should sign the property over to him. He'll buy it. Well, that was it. And there's a lady across the street that wants to buy it. If anything, whatever I can get out of it, I'll sell it to her and she can fix it up if she can. But, uh, there's just too much for one person. And I'm the only person, so I do what I can. Right now, that, like I said, we live in Liberty and so it's, it's kind of hard when you got a husband that don't do anything and the riding lawnmower goes bad, okay, I have to fix it. The car, it, um, got a bad tire, it broke up all the wiring. I don't have no turn signals right now, but I did get the headlights fixed and the taillights fixed. It's just one thing after another. The truck, if I had the truck, I'd be good because I find somebody to help me. There's a china cabinet in that house. I want it because it belonged to my dad's aunt. And I want to get it out of there. And I do have a daughter in Grand Island. And the only thing is my husband kind of had the outs with her. And so to keep them apart, I'll just tell her to go get that china cabinet and take it home with her. Uh, because it's kind of in the family. And that's the main thing that I want to, that they done stole the, uh, there was a tool chest that belonged to my first husband. The tool chest is gone. It was snap-on tools with full of, uh, uh, oh, wrenches and stuff. He was the mechanic. We owned a, uh, Craig's Towing there in Bellevue. Till he passed away at forty. So, uh, it just, it's one thing after another for me. I'm doing what I can. That's all I can do. Right now, I wa- I mean, they just trashed this house. I know it's bad. But we first started, we got the roof put on, you know, a new roof put on it. But the, it, inside, you know, water had gotten in there. So you seen the pictures, uh, the, uh, drywall is falling down. And there's a lot of work to do to it, but this lady across the street, she said she'd fix it up. And like I said, this other guy, he wants it and he wants it bad. He ke- kept calling me and I wouldn't answer the phone anymore. He, I sold him the rest of the property that surrounds this, uh, house. And he wants it. And I ain't selling it to him. When I, when he goes and tells my daughter that I'm dead. And he, she, he wants her to sell the property to him. You know, that, that was it. So I'm doing what I can, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to hear it. I'm sorry that your husband has to go through that and you have to go through that disease. It's terrible disease.
It is.
Have you, have you discussed price or anything with your neighbor?
No, I'm gonna get what I can get and, uh, that'll be it. Now, I'm gonna go with her because whatever she can, uh, afford, uh, and fix it up, I'm gonna sell it to her.
Okay, do you have any, does council have any questions for Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Marlene, I'm sorry that you're having to go through this. Um, how long has your husband had the Alzheimer's disease?
Oh, a good ten years, probably.
Okay, so it's been ten years that you've not had the assistance of him helping you? Is that correct?
Yeah, at least.
Okay, okay. And, um, do you have a purchase agreement with the neighbor across the street? Do you have legal documentation that she's going to buy?
I, I haven't talked to her. I, I was over there and, uh, her father lives across the street to, from this house.
Okay.
This is why she wants it. And, um, I thought I, coming from Liberty and trying to get everything done over there and you know, it's, it was kind of hard getting here. I was lucky to get here at, on time.
And that, so this property has been in decay for quite a while. It just didn't happen over the last couple of years.
I know, I know.
It's been going on for a while. And, and you've had opportunities to sell it, to fix it up during this time, correct?
Uh, a year, maybe a year ago.
Okay.
Until, like I told you, this guy really made me mad when he pulled that crap with my daughter, telling her I'm dead.
I understa- and I'm, yeah, there are some interesting people out there. I can, being in real estate, I can tell you that. So I, I guess I'm concerned that this has been going on a long time and because now we're getting ready to make decisions that are hard decisions for us.
Yes.
You're asking us to give you a little more time.
Little more time and I'll sell it.
Okay, I, and, and I feel that Mike, who's a great compassionate man.
I know him.
Would, would give.
I've talked to him before.
Would give ti- he wouldn't bring it to us unless
Oh, I understand.
At the final straw.
I know. It's, it's in bad shape. I know it.
So if we, I want to ask legal, if we vote to condemn the structure, can someone come in and buy it prior to it being removed?
I, I think they can. I think that the issue's gonna be whether that person, how that person's going to make the purchase. Whether, if there's a lender involved, that may be prohibitive of us, the sale going through. Whether, if there's a lender involved, that may be prohibitive of the sale going through.
Okay, but I guess I'm leaning towards that we move forward with the condemnation and if this person really wants to buy it, they get a hold of Mike and, and do this whole thing. Cause I know in, in my experience, and I think Mr. Mayor would be the same way, that we have a lot of people that talk about buying houses and if every time they said they were gonna buy something, they actually did, I would be living in Tahiti at this moment.
Oh, I understand. But she wanted it real bad too.
I understand, but people talk and it's a matter of-
Well, I'll, I'll find out tonight because I'll go over there and talk to her dad.
I understand. But I'm still thinking we, that we move forward with the, the um, the resolution to condemn it and then if she can pull her act together and wanna buy it, then we can work from there, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think the condemnation order's gonna stand. I don't know that we can remove that, even if somebody buys it. Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, would you come to the mic and explain the process? If we go ahead and condemn it, what's the timeline and what happens and what options are there?
If we go forth with the condemnation, the condemnation stays with the property. And the owners will have thirty days to take action, to take care of the property. Either have the process in place to get it demoed, demoed or have it demoed within that timeframe. This house is in really bad shape. I could go back to the pictures and posit in a couple of different areas. The mold and mildew just in the house alone is horrendous. You can't even walk by the windows without, you know, getting a headache from it. The porch, the stairs, the, the foundation, there, there's very little left to salvage in this property. And I can go back and point those things out again if, if we'd like.
That was my estimate and looking at those pictures, just seeing the condition, not even knowing about the mold, but assuming it was probably there. It may be the best thing to get rid of the house. You may have a lot then to sell, but in the condition it's in, I don't foresee anybody, especially somebody who may not be experienced, being able to do much, if anything. I don't even know what the condition of the foundation is in, if that would even be salvageable. But, thank you, Mike. So there's thirty days after we do this. So if a buyer could come up with a plan, all that would have to be submitted to permits. It would all have to be approved within those thirty days. The city wouldn't take any action or actually have it demolished within that timeframe, correct?
No, I'll, I'll come back before council to get authorization to demo it with a selected contractor at that point in time.
But somebody could, if we condemn it tonight, somebody could not come in and bring you a plan to renovate it.
No, we would have to remove that order. You know, and they would have to show cause that they're, or have the means to bring this property back into habitable condition. There's a lot there. It's in bad shape.
But we could remove the order, correct? The condemnation order. If that person came forward and said, here's the plan I've got, here's the contractors I have. Mike, can you give me the permits and what is necessary to get this done?
I think once you put it in place, it's, it's a done deal.
Okay.
Now, the other one, you know, recently we had a resolution that wasn't passed to condemn. We just pushed it down the road.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Marlene, I, I, are you following what? I think, I think the information that we're getting here is that house is to a point that it probably has to go down. It has to be torn down. That the thought is, it's beyond repair. I mean, Mike, would you agree with that, that?
It would take an extensive amount of work to bring it back into habitable condition, you know, uh, as, as-
If I wasn't as old as I am, I, I'd show you.
The roof had been leaking, you know, for quite some time. I think they had made an attempt to try to stop that, but the damage was already done.
Yeah.
And the windows have been knocked out of it. Uh, the porch is failing on the front. There are parts on the foundation.
The window, but uh, last, I did put that floor, you know, uh, or that porch where you go up those so-called steps. And uh, I did uh, put in, you know, a floor there. So you can walk, you know, anywhere.
Yeah, let's um, I'm at, I'm gonna turn it back over to the council here. Might have some more questions?
You're doing, go ahead.
Councilman Casey?
A quick question, Ms. Glass. What, when was the last time the house was occupied?
Long time. I'm not even sure.
Two years, five years?
Oh, at least five years.
Okay. So I, I went out and looked at this property on Sunday and neighbors, I believe two houses to the south, approached me, husband and wife, and begged me to, to have this thing tore down. That it was, they were, had people, they see, see people going in and out. I, I didn't go in the house, but when I got close to it, as Mr. Christian said, I could, I could actually smell the, the, the mold from outside, so-
Well, we'll see what, like I said, if she still wants it and uh, I'm not gonna sell it to that guy that said I was dead.
But again, I, I just wanna clarify. It's, I, I think what we're hearing is it's-
I think it could be fixed up.
Okay.
If I was a little bit younger than I am now, I'd show you. It'd be fixed up.
It, it would be a lot of money to fix that up.
Oh, that too. Then, that's the bad thing. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak regarding um, fourteen B? Please come forward. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Go on to uh, fourteen B one, resolution number two zero two three dash one nine condemning the structures located at two six one one Margaux Street. And do I have a motion? Councilman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two three dash one nine.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Com, um, comments or questions? Uh, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for coming out. Um, you'll, you'll definitely have the time to get the Hutch and stuff out of there, so make sure you get it out. And then I would, I would work with your neighbor um, as quick as possible.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item-
Thanks, Mike.
Fourteen C, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation at eight four one eight South Thirty-Sixth Street, Bellevue, six eight one four seven. And I'll open up fourteen C for public hearing. Start with Mike.
Okay, once again, I have a clip of the property. So initially in twenty eighteen, they had pulled permits to renovate this property. Not, there was no work done at, at all during that timeframe and the permits expired. Um, we, when we notified them that the permits expired, they came in and renewed the permits one last time and a footing was done in twenty eighteen and that was the only inspection that was done. Those permits, after they'd been renewed, have expired again. This property's just been sitting and deteriorating. It's primarily being used for a staging area for a construction company. They're dumping dirt there. It's zoned RS seventy-two for residential only. They've got construction materials all, all around. They keep their construction trailers there in the back. Um, looks like they do a lot of gutter, gutter replacement. Um, most of those trailers are full of remnants of gutters from other properties. And basically just using it as a staging area for the construction company.
Any questions for Mike? Councilman Welch?
Go ahead, Paul.
Mike, just looking at those pictures, uh, when, when, when we get a bid, will it be to clean all that up if that contractor doesn't move everything? Cause it looked like he's had piles of some trash too. I don't know where property lines are. It looks like a bigger lot, but-
Most of it is contained to a couple piles and they're probably saving it for, to turn in for metal, metal prices.
Thank you.
Councilman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mike, on this particular property, if we approve the resolution to condemn it, um, that means they have to remove the house, correct?
Correct.
Can they still continue to use this area as a storage or does that violate city codes because it's not zoned for that?
It's not zoned for construction. That would be a question for Tammy.
It would have to be used as a single-family residence, so the equipment and the materials that they have there now shouldn't be there. Um, even with the house there, you, um, that would violate the terms of a home-based business. So that's, in my mind, it's, it's a separate issue. Um, we'd have to deal with the, you know, removal and then we would also have to deal with the zoning violations.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Uh, public hearing is still open for fourteen C. Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding fourteen C? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Fourteen C one, resolution number two zero two three dash twenty condemning the structure located at eighty-four eighteen South Thirty-Sixth Street. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also went out and looked at this one. I one hundred percent agree. This, this one needs to come down too. So I'll make the motion for approval, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen, we have no resolutions this evening. Item sixteen, current business. Sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the inner local agreement with Sarpy County regarding the purchase of a trained police dog. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the D R E State Training Coordinator contract with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for salary reimbursement for Lieutenant Joe Milos' services as the statewide drug recognition coordinator. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the third addendum extension to the lease purchase agreement with Premier Sports Village LLC, ending August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the city of Omaha for the disposal of yardwa, of yard waste, ending December one, two thousand twenty-three in an amount not to exceed twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents per ton. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen D. Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the third addendum with papillion sanitation for the reimbursement of processing and disposal fees of yard waste at Omagro. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Sixteen F, approve the acquisitions, permanent and temporary easements for the Thirty-Sixth Street Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen F.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the University of Nebraska Medical Center for forensic lab testing beginning July fifth, two thousand twenty-three through July fifth, two thousand twenty-four in an amount not to exceed prices on the laboratory fee scheduled attached. Do I have a motion? Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item sixteen G as just read.
Second.
Motion by Price, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with Bellevue University regarding traffic control. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make motion to approve item sixteen H.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilman Price, yours going through?
Mike, it came up twice.
Oh, there it comes. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Teal Geotech Inc. for testing services on the library renovations in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Make a motion to approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended local agreement with Eastern Sarpy Suburban Fire District. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on current reports. Jim, report is attached. Are there any comments or questions? Those will be filed in the record. Item eighteen, we have no closed session and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Vote, please.
All voting yes, motion carries.